Good evening, everyone. My name is Alex Neve. I'm an Ottawa-based human rights lawyer and I'm one of the four commissioners serving with the Ottawa People's Commission. And I'm delighted to be here this evening with two of my colleagues, Leilani Farha and Debbie Wusuachia, who you'll hear from in a moment. And wanted to begin on behalf of all of us by acknowledging that while we gather virtually this evening, we are nonetheless gathering on the lands unseated and unsurrendered of the Algonquin Anishnaabik people. And which is always an important reminder and acknowledgement when we gather for any purpose. But we have been particularly aware of how significant it is as we have been convening these sessions of the Ottawa People's Commission, which is of course all about the convoy occupation. And it reminds us that this occupation and the many ways in which it had very serious and often harmful impact on members of our community was an occupation of lands that are already occupied. And that there's, there's an extra layer of consideration therefore as to what this is all about and what its impact truly is. And, and we're very aware of that as we go through this process. It also reminds us that it is human rights that are at the heart of all things related to the convoy occupation. I think very readily, certainly in, in, in the media and political discourse, there's discussion of the fact that this is of course all about that very important right to peaceful protest. A right that all of us cherish. I think I can safely say a right that all of us take advantage of and participate in and recognize its crucial role in society. And that's certainly at the heart of, of our work. We're, we're, we're champions of that right. And it will certainly feature in, in how we go about understanding all of the information that has been shared with us. At the same time, our commission is all about the impact of the convoy on the community. And that brings into play a much wider and, and also very important human rights framework, which is all about the human rights of members of that community, the thousands of people who live and work and, and pass through Central Ottawa. A community made up of communities which include vulnerable communities with, with pressing human rights concerns even when there isn't a convoy in town. And so that framework, that, that strong recognition that we have to start from understanding and then being sure that we're upholding the rights of the members of this community is very much going to guide our approach and is, and is what we're listening for in all of these sessions. The, the People's Commission itself is of course a community inspired and generated and organized initiative. And it's very powerful and important as a result. It's, it's been generated from, from the grassroots in response to a real need within communities. And certainly as we go forward, we're cognizant of the fact that that reflects a need for healing and also a need for justice. Those two concerns very much motivated the, the decision to, to launch the People's Commission. And, and, and we've already sensed that as we've gone through all of these sessions, that that's uppermost in so many people's minds. And certainly I expect we'll hear more about that this evening. This is another in a series of sessions we've held now. I've lost track, but we've had many sessions both online and in person. And it's been a true honour for all of us to be in the role we're in and, and to hear directly from people about their experiences. We've had sessions like this evenings where we're hearing individually from a number of people. We've also gathered together for community meetings when we've had anywhere from a handful to fifty or sixty people who come together for a community's discussion, often featured on the needs of a particular community or a particular theme. We've also been receiving a significant number of written submissions. So that kind of sets things up as to what we're about and where we've come from. And I'm going to turn things over to Leilani now, who's going to have a little bit more to say about how we're going to roll this evening.
Thanks so much, Alex. And I just want to say a warm welcome to our speakers for tonight. I take very seriously the Ottawa People's Commission and its contribution to a robust democracy. And that means those of you who are having the courage to come forward and speak are contributing to our democracy because of course, what is democracy if, if we can't all speak and have free expression and talk about our experiences of things like a major intervention in our city like the convoy. So just a big thanks to all of you who are exercising this opportunity and, and joining us tonight. How we'll roll is pretty straightforward. We have four speakers tonight. We, I think you are all lined up and probably know the order in which you are speaking. We will invite you each to come forward on Zoom. If you're willing to put your camera on, fantastic. If not completely understood, you can use your real name, a pseudonym or no name. And we ask that you provide us with your five minutes of testimony. We don't wave cards in your face or do anything like that to catch you off. So just we ask that you be mindful of the time. And then the three of us will ask questions. Normally each person, each of us of the commissioners, we each do have some questions. We'll try not to pepper you too much with them. But it's useful for us in as we go forward and, and write the report and come up with recommendations just for some clarity in some instances. Yeah. So before we call our first speaker, I'd like Debbie, my colleague and fellow commissioner to introduce herself.
Thank you so much, Leilani. Hi, everyone. My name is Debbie Wusuachia. I use she/her pronouns and I happen to be a senior executive of a nonprofit here in Ottawa and also just a proud community member, someone who serves her community when she can. And I'm honoured to be one of the four commissioners here. And I echo what my colleagues have mentioned and saying, thank you for joining us this evening and being so open to share your experience of the occupation, whatever it may be, this past February. And so really looking forward to hearing you all today. And with that being said, I'll pass it back to Leilani to open the floor.
Thanks, Debbie. And so our first speaker, I believe we are ready for you.
Sorry, just getting myself set up with
No worries.
microphone and, and camera. Excellent. So good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Michelle Hurchby and I'm the Executive Director at Centertown Community Health Centre, which is located at 420 Cooper Street. And so as a CHC, we provide primary care, a wide range of other health and social services to residents living in Centertown, the Glebe and Old South areas. And so during the occupation, we were located in the red zone as identified by Ottawa Police Services. And I'd like to tell you just a little bit about our experiences as a service provider and things that we heard from some of our clients and staff throughout that period of time. So we were carefully monitoring the events of vehicles moving across the country and descending on Ottawa. And we made the decision on the afternoon of Friday, January twenty ninth to, twenty eighth, rather, to close our services early around three P M. To allow staff the opportunity to get home in a timely manner because it had quickly become apparent that various streets around our building were being blocked off by the trucks. By the afternoon of Sunday, January the thirtieth, it was clear that we would also need to do contingency planning because there was going to be significant barriers to providing services for many of our clients onsite as a result of the occupation. We are People's Individual Primary Care Provider, as well as providing services to clients for drop-in for a wide range of social supports. And so we decided that we would continue to provide services, but due to the fact that we had heard of multiple businesses being flooded with individuals coming into their spaces, and it's fairly well known in the community that we have public washrooms and showers for some of our clients who are street involved, is that we decide that we would lock the front entrance to our building since we do have, we want to restrict the access and only allow individuals who are our clients into our building. So we encourage staff who could work from home to work from home. But because we provide that primary care across the lifespan from babies to seniors, we needed to ensure that we were able to see people still in our buildings. As a service provider and understandably working with people, we could hear the horns nonstop as we were continuing to try to provide counselling, listening to the concerns of clients who are coming in to get very much needed healthcare. We heard from clients who lived in the area about the stress of not being able to sleep or work from home because of the incessant noise and orders from the diesel from all the vehicles. And I had staff calling me asking for help, asked to escalate reports to Ottawa Police Services because clients had called defiled complaints and reports about incidents that had happened to them on the streets and we're not getting any calls back from OPS to respond to the many incidents of harassment, violence and defacement of their buildings. We had a board committee during the week, second week of the occupation and one of my board members who lives in the red zone not far from our offices spoke of their distress, distress about having feces smeared on their porch and on their vehicles. And so this is more than people defecating and urinating on their property, which is distressing enough. But people taking the time to face property with bodily waste is a whole other level of disregard and violence. We offered to support staff who lived in the area to move out of the area due to all the noise and disruption. None of our staff took us up on this, but asked us to make sure that we put resources into clients and community members. And so we supported local initiatives to ensure that care kits got out to community members, including earplugs, food and activities to distract people. We offered several virtual support groups and Counselling Connect, which is an online platform that we host with other community partners to provide services saw a thirty percent increase over that three-week period of time in calls for support and emergency counselling as residents tried to deal with the occupation. I made it to the office every day during the occupation. I live outside of the red zone. However, I soon stopped going out of our offices on breaks or lunch. So most of the time I would be harassed by individuals as just trying to get a cup of coffee from Tim Hortons or pick up groceries. Individuals would walk right up and start yelling in your face that you didn't need to be a sheep or keep wearing a mask or just shouting freedom nonstop in the streets and in your face. It was unpleasant to say the least anywhere on those streets around Bank and Cooper. However, our most challenging day was likely on February fifth, when we decided to continue holding our COVID vaccination clinic on the Saturday for children five to twelve. We had been planning this for several weeks and we knew that for many families, these were the most convenient, we were the most convenient and accessible location for vaccinations. We debated counselling and in the end we went ahead. However, due to the attacks and threats that others had received on social media, we scrubbed any promotion of our clinic on social media and did individual calls to families to let them know that we were going ahead. On that same weekend, there were, we've heard some examples through other, at other events of the People's Commission that there had been community safety, organized walks that had to be abandoned because of swarming that happened at Bank at Somerset just around the corner from us. There were individuals setting an open fire pits in front of our offices while drinking beer. And so concerned for the safety of individuals coming for appointments, I called police, Ottawa Police, to address the fires in front of our building and was told on no uncertain terms that there would be no response because we were in the red zone. In response, I tweeted a picture of the fires that were happening and saying that we had been told that there would be no response. And within an hour, there was a response from police and bylaw who thankfully did move the individuals with the fires along, but also ticketed a family who had been parked in an accessible spot to bring their kids to vaccination because it was the only place available with all the protest vehicles going on, blocking all the other parking and lighting fires. And as soon as they left, it was filled with protesters who didn't receive a single ticket the rest of the day. So families expressed deep appreciation that we continued the vaccination clinic. They also expressed fear in coming to the centre and that children felt scared walking the streets. They reported being shouted out, shouted at and pushed on the streets because they were wearing their masks. That day, we vaccinated close to sixty children as well as a handful of adults. We had advised our staff to park outside the red zone and walk into work so that they could leave easily from our offices. As I walked from the offices later that afternoon, the streets were packed. I wore my mask on the streets because they were still so crowded. And that during that twenty-minute walk to where I had parked, I experienced several people walking directly into me, body checking me and telling me to take off my mask, calling me a number of names in the process. I am a large white woman and I found it nerve-wracking to walk the distance back to my car, let alone other people who were on the streets who might not have the privilege of my size or my whiteness. So throughout the three and a half weeks of the occupation, it was grassroots community initiatives, other community agencies operating in the red zone and the supportive councillor Catherine McKenney and M P P Joel Harden, who supported the community. Catherine and Joel held regular town halls with agencies asking us what we needed, how we could collectively support the community. We did not hear once from Ottawa Police Services as to how the community was coping. And in fact, it was quite distressing to hear that there was no violence happening and that it was a peaceful protest when this was not what we were hearing from our clients or community members. During the last week of the occupation, as the barricades went up and residents and individuals who worked in the red zone had to show I D to get into the area, it was two of my staff members who were racialized, who were challenged with their documentation by police, highlighting concerns reported by some of our client staff living in the area that the increased police presence had a disproportionate impact on racialized communities, despite the fact that the majority of the participants in the occupation were folks racialized as white. I've been an executive director of community organizations for over twenty-five years. This was my most challenging leadership ever in my issue ever in my career. Figuring out how to continue to offer warm and welcoming services to our clients during unrelenting harassment, noise and the stench of diesel making you ill, it was exhausting and the impact is still being felt across the community today. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you very much, Michelle. That was succinct and very, very complete. I know all of us will have questions for you. So I'll just cede the floor to Debbie. Do you want to go first?
Yes, I do, Michelle. I just wanted to say thank you. And from one executive director to another, I absolutely understand the challenges you would have faced from a leadership perspective during that time. I don't work in the same level of direct frontline service that you provide, but for the community we serve, which is T S L G B T Q folks, folks who lived in the red zone, young people, students, absolutely understanding the level of complexity to want to not only show up for your staff or community, but also take care of yourself at the same time. So I just wanted to like, just share that with you because I think it's important to hear. You mentioned Catherine and Joel, two of your local representatives, providing the space for agencies to be heard, to kind of share challenges. And I just wanted to get a clarification. It was OPS you said that didn't communicate with you?
Ottawa Police, Ottawa Police Services. So we didn't actually really hear from Ottawa Police Services or the city. We never heard from Ottawa Police Services, never reached out to agencies during that whole time. I think there was a reach out from the city during the second week perhaps. United Way also hosted a conversation. But I will say it was the consistency of Catherine and Joel who held sessions every single week, twice in that first kind of week and second week, just to touch base and problem solve and share resources and look at coordinating as clients and community members were looking for supports.
Perfect. So the bureaucracy of our municipality essentially, whom I'm assuming plays a key role with some of the services that you provide. And it wasn't until the second week you said that, that they started engaging with you? What type of supports did they provide at the time? What were the conversations like?
Really, it was, it was just a, a reach out to say like, do you need anything and how is it going? And so, you know, we responded, quite honestly, we're a fairly well-resourced organization as a community health centre. So we did not particularly require additional resources and supports. We were able to manage. Whereas I certainly know other community agencies such as, you know, Cornerstone Housing for Women had a very different, they were located at a different place in the red zone, much deeper into the red zone. But also have a different kind of service of twenty-four hours and housing. So they had some real needs. So for us, it was more our challenges of as clients were calling and community members were calling frustrated because they were not getting any response from Ottawa Police Services that, and the lack of support for individuals who are really struggling with, with the noise and sound. And there was only so much that we could do as a community centre.
Perfect. Thank you. One last question before I pass it along to my colleagues. And I recognize that like this type of data gathering, there may be complexities there, but I was just curious if you did kind of track the amount of times clients may have called you about the issues that they were dealing with, who may have said, I can't come to get services because I'm afraid, et cetera. Just wondered if you folks did that type of like info gathering and data collection because I think it could be useful, not only for the commission, but I just also think from a recommendation standpoint to kind of paint that picture that this occupation impacted people receiving life-saving support. So I'm just kind of curious if you folks did that.
That's a really good question. I don't actually think that we did because we were in, we were in a bit fight and flight mode too, right? Like, how do we kind of mobilize and get supports? The best tracking that we have is the impact of the increased number of clients who came onto Counselling Connect. We were fortunate that we were able to ramp up counselling hours that were available. As you said, Debbie, there was a disproportionate impact on T S L G B T Q community members, individuals from the African Black Caribbean and Asian communities. We're fortunate, one of the structures of Counselling Connect is that we actually, people can go on and select and say, I want someone from my community to provide me counselling services. And so there was that uptick in demand that we heard and people looking for coping strategies because they were really struggling. That's the most that we have of the data that was collected in a, in a concise way.
Okay, perfect. Still super useful. Thank you.
Alex, do you want to go ahead?
Thank you immensely, Michelle, for, for this, this testimony. But, but I guess maybe even more profoundly for, for what you've described in terms of of the work and, and response that, that you and your, your colleagues were able to spearhead. That's so impressive and so necessary. I, I do, I have a few specific questions, but maybe, maybe a general question first. Have you ever seen anything that came remotely close to this in downtown Ottawa? You've, you've, you've seen a lot, I'm sure. I mean, a lot happened in downtown Ottawa.
You know, I think as, as I think other people have said in various forums, if you're in, if you're in downtown Ottawa, you are used to protests. You're used to the streets being shut down. A bank street is often taken over with a protest. They move along. We know that there's the disruption. We know that that's about how we plan for services. We know that when there's Canada Day happening in the middle of the week, we're going to have to adjust how we're coming into work as, you know, barriers get set up to regulate traffic around that. Nothing compared to what we experienced and the challenges of, of delivering services. I can't tell you how distressing it is when somebody is coming in and in not great health and has kind of fought their way through the crowds to come in. And there wasn't, you know, you could, you could hear the noise all through our building and we were at the far end of where the red zone was. So you could still hear it and smell the noise. Every day it was sort of a guess, you know, how, what the block was going to be coming up Kent Street of people coming in for services. And just the distress for people, also for us, that a really important piece about our services throughout the pandemic is we actually never closed our doors. We were always open for in-person services. People could, yes, we had screening and, but people could freely come into our building. It was a real distress for a number of our staff that we made the decision from a management team to lock the doors because we were concerned that people would come in and we wouldn't be able to get them out. And, but we made that decision to be able to continue to offer services and, and manage the, the risk. So it's, it's, you know, I've never been in a place where I've had to lock my doors in terms of in that way for, for service because I, I, I didn't know whether or not I could get people out. When we did the community vaccination clinic, just to say, we normally have it in our front foyer. Kids come in when we had done it before. You know, they get loot bags. It's, it's a fun, engaging activity. We moved it to the far back of our building so that clients would kind of come in and not be disturbed by what was happening out on the streets. And you know, that, that did, the team is incredible and still created this celebratory of, of kids getting their vaccinations and made it fun and engaging for families. But it was a little weird having to push it to the back of our building. And there was a moment when we really, when, when, when the safety walks were being stormed on, on the Saturday behind us to say, you know, what do we do? Because that's our evacuation plan, right? To go out that exit. And, you know, we continued to deliver services. The team is incredible. But it was, it was, it was a challenging day to be offering a vaccination clinic in the midst of all of this.
I, I'd like to explore a little bit about what you've shared in terms of the police. And, and maybe to start specifically with the response you got when you made the phone call on that vaccination day to, to report the concerns about the open fires. You, you, you said that, that what you got back was, sorry, we're not coming because you're in the red zone.
You're in the red zone.
So is the, is the implication there? Well, maybe, how did you interpret that?
Well, I, I interpreted that they had made a decision that they were not, sorry, my dog is just, is attacking the couch. Sorry, just give me. The, the, they actually said that they have made a decision that they're not responding to any bylaw infractions in the red zone during that day. And so, and I said, but they have got giant propane tanks hooked up to metal drums that they're burning fires in and they are drinking beer. And I have little kids coming for this. This, this is not, this is not safe. And they said, we're, we're not responding. And I have to say that as, it was a bit of a shock and I'm going to say owning full privilege as a white woman in an agency with two, with two police officers that were on our Board of Directors to, to hear that they weren't responding. And, and imagine what that was feeling like for individuals in apartment buildings who couldn't get out of apartment buildings. And we're, we're told that there was going to be no response. It, it was really quite shocking. And I'm going to say my middle-class white privilege did never, never thought that I would call police to support. And, and we have done some work around having alternatives to policing for response and community crisis. And, and you know, as a community health centre. And so know the challenges within that. And still within this process of trying to keep our clients safe, to be told you're on your own, was a bit of a shocking moment. And trying to think about, so again, I posted on social media. One of our board members who is a police officer, I think, did escalate it in a response to us. Quite honestly, I don't know how otherwise it would have been responded to. And bylaw did come.
And to shame them.
Pardon?
So you had to shame them.
But had to shame them. And, and it resulted in one of our clients getting a parking infraction and then we never saw them again for the rest of the day. Now, we paid that parking ticket for the client because honestly, they never would have gotten it had we not called to have the fire removed. So, you know, I, I think that that is, is is part of that experience as we heard that from other clients and community members, that response of, we're not coming. We know that there is stuff going on, file a report and we'll, and we'll look into it or we won't look into it or we're, but we're not coming at all.
But they, but you, you weren't just calling to complain about fires. You were making it clear that
There was young children.
A bunch of young children coming.
There was young children. There was beer drinking, propane tanks hooked up to metal, you know, drums. This was, we had young children coming for a vaccination clinic and this was happening directly in front of our building. Like there was just no way that people could come, that could come and not, not be like at risk. And, and family came, family members came in and were both really grateful that we still went ahead with it. They were worried that we weren't going to do the vaccinations. They were worried that we weren't going to do the vaccinations and um, really distressed at having to uh, go through all that, go, go through all of that, navigate all of that to um, get to, get to the vaccination clinic.
Now, I'm uh, assuming that um, in, in non-convoy times, you must have some degree of an ongoing, I don't know, if relationship's too strong a word, but you, you probably have back and forth from time to time with the police.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we've been part of community events that happen, disturbances that have happened, critical incidents that ha- have happened. They've been part of debriefing, um, things that have happened in, in the community. And our community workers have often worked with them around, around those incidents. Um, so we often have those, those conversations. Um, as I said, from time to time, we have also had police officers on our board of directors. Um, and uh, uh, as, as part of sort of some of that uh, community engagement piece. But it, it was really, it was really challenging.
It, it just makes me wonder, you know, aside from frankly, how outrageous it is that you got the response you did when reporting a specific incident. Would you have expected that, you know, given, given who you are, given, given the nature of your agency, given what was happening on the ground, that there might have been something a bit more proactive on the part of police? Some sort of liaison officers who were checking in or reaching out?
Again, um, as I said, it's, is that I think that's the shocking is that I assumed because of the privilege of being an organization, we would have gotten a different response than some of the community members. Um, and that's my own kind of um, uh, sort of like um, disbelief around some of that. Um, you know, after that happened, then we did have walk-by of a couple of officers who came to check on us. But it was because we posted it on social media, not because we, not because we um, did any phone call.
Then my last question still with this theme of the police, you, you, uh, you said something about how your, your staff were getting a lot of um, reports from clients, I guess, who, who were sharing their own uh, difficulty in, in having tried to report things to the police and, and getting uh, no response. Uh, do you, do you know what kind of uh, responses people were getting when they brought those incidents to the police's attention?
So mainly I heard from our staff who were saying that they were getting um, uh, that they actually were just not getting any response. They, they would leave a message and nobody would call them back. And they um, were told that they were not, uh, that they were not incidences that they were going to respond to because they were not serious enough. Often that was sort of the kind of response. There was a real minimization of what the impact was that, of people, that people were experiencing. Um, and um, uh, and you know, so it was um, time and time again of saying, how can we help escalate this? How can we help escalate this? Because that's part of what we do as a community organization is also help uh, people bring forward their concerns to systems and structures. Um, and so that was what a lot of some of our community, particularly our um, uh, our uh, community worker with our two S LGBTQ uh, newcomers um, program.
Um, and, and maybe just one last question. Um, uh, are you aware of in, in any of those attempts to escalate things with the police? Was there ever a response even once?
Uh, not that, not that I know of or that I heard from people. In fact, it was one of the pieces and, you know, to be really transparent, Centertown Community Health Center um, has been the backbone organization for the Ottawa People's Commission in terms of providing infrastructure and support. And one of the reasons that we did that is because of the call from people to say, we want our voices heard because we felt like they weren't heard during the convoy occupation with all of the systems and structures. And um, uh, and we need these stories to be told and heard and spoken about. And um, you know, that really was, uh, that's really what the impetus was for us around supporting um, uh, this call from community members.
Thanks, Michelle. I'll pass things over to Lillani.
Yes, thanks so much, Michelle, and, and lots of clarity already um, through this Q and A part. So I just have two questions. Um, I seem to have kind of missed something, so I just want clarity and my apologies. End of a long, long day and my brain might not be as um, firing as quickly as it should. Um, did you say, and I think through Debbie's question, you did say that at some point, the city bureaucracy did approach you um, regarding your needs as a, um, as a community org. Can you, yeah, so can, I, I seem to have missed that. And that's the first, I think you're the, I haven't been to all of the um, hearings, of course, but I've not heard that before.
We got, it was as simple as an email. I think it was just, it was um, my recollection, I went through my emails. There was one email that just said, do you need anything? Uh, and if so, you know, reach out and let us know.
And was that a group email to like a whole bunch of organizations across Ottawa or was it directed to you?
I don't know, because often we get the emails from the city that are blind copied. So I have, okay, like I have no idea, to be honest.
Right.
And so um, the um, so it, it, but you know, we just, and I responded like we've got the resources that we need to do what we need to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we didn't, we didn't, I mean, we had pressure points, but we are also as an organization um, uh, had the resources to be able to respond, right?
Yes. What I was, what I'm looking for is trying to understand, not just through your t- testimony, but through others as well. Whether there was a sense at city level through the police, at the provincial level, we can laugh at that. That cert, that there were certain organizations providing what I would call life-saving services, essential services to the well-being of people. And whether it, it was recognized that, that they, many of them are in the red zone and may not be able to actually keep their door open and continue to provide the services that are so desperately needed by certain populations that you service in, in more peaceful times.
There was none of that sense of urgency. Um, and compared to, for example, I mean, so we've had some conversations about what does emergency planning look like? Because like, I have to tell you, this is never, this was never on my scenario for emergency planning. But you know, when the tornado hit, um, because I was, uh, I, I came to Western Ottawa Community Resource Center the year after the tornado hit and um, or shortly thereafter. And, and you know, the emergency response planning had pulled together a group of people to respond to this disruption. Uh, it is, it is dramatic and impactful. And it was every bit as dramatic as impactful in Centertown with the occupation and as disruptive and as harmful and as long-lasting impacts for a number of people who have hearing loss, trauma, uh, uh, damage to pets who are now, um, you know, really uh, struggle uh, uh, all of those kinds of pieces. There wasn't the same sense of from the city of we're pulling together a community response or we're gathering you around the table or collecting or having this conversation about what do we need to be doing to support you? Uh, again, that came from Catherine McKenney and Joel Harden working independently to reach out and say, and how do we do this? And there was tons of grassroots stuff happening that we couldn't do as agencies. But we could connect people to them. So we can kind of go, okay, we can't do safety walks for you, but here is somebody who can help you take your dog for a walk in a safe way. Um, you know, uh, we can make sure that, you know, uh, we can communicate. Okay, we're dropping off earplugs to this building. Who's dropping off earplugs to that building, right? Um, but there wasn't, but that was happening from the agencies and through those town halls and not from, um, there was, I didn't, I never got the sense of urgency from the city about the impact about what was happening around agencies responding.
Right. And, and you may not want to answer this question and, and that's your prerogative. Uh, I'm just trying to connect some dots. Do you, does your center receive um, money from the city of Ottawa?
Yes, we do.
And, right. Do you receive provincial money?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
So the bulk of our money comes um, provincially uh, from the, from Ontario Health. And uh, we uh, receive, um, I think it's in the neighborhood of about six hundred thousand or in that neighborhood or maybe five hundred thousand somewhere in there uh, from the city of Ottawa. Um, and that does support um, uh, ironically enough, our two S LGBTQ newcomer program. Um, and one of our two S LGBT uh, Q counselors. And so, um, who were again, populations that were disproportionately impacted um, in, during the occupation um, through homophobia, transphobia, for sure.
Yeah. Okay. And my second question, you've mostly answered, um, but you might want to just um, add something. You had mentioned that the impact of this on your clients is ongoing. And you've now mentioned some of those things, hearing loss, trauma, damage to pets. Wondered if you wanted to add anything to that.
Um, you know, I think there is, um, uh, I think, you know, that it's, it's the ongoing impact of um, trauma that is hard to quantify, uh, to be honest.
No, I understand. I've got a dog too. Do what you need to do. I don't need to keep you further.
A nine-month-old lab puppy in the background, just like got something and said, oh, you're distracted. I'm just going to rip this to shreds. Um, yeah, so I, you know, I, that, those are the things in terms of um, uh, the, the hearing, the ongoing um, uh, uh, trauma, just in terms of the noise, um, the unsettling, the not feeling safe in the community. And, and the ongoing impact of really being told that you are alone, like that, 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 that there was nobody coming. Um, uh, the ongoing story to hear night after night on every news that this was a peaceful protest. And it, and I understand the difference language that police were using about what peaceful means to them. But what peaceful means in our community is that I have the right to enjoyment of my home. I have the right to be able to go to sleep and trust that, you know, that I actually can get to sleep. And again, the residents of Centertown are used to disruption and protest. They are not used to them going on for days and nights um, uh, with the noise and sound and smell um, uh, that, that is going on. None of those protests had people, uh, you, you know, you might get people um, defecating or urinating on your lawns. Um, you do not have them actually smearing it into your porches and vehicles to, to really do that level of degradation. And um, uh, and attacking to, 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 to say, you know, I'm going to take this out on you in this way.
Yes. Thank you so much, Michelle. I'll let you get to your nine-month-old puppy. Uh, this has been really uh, very useful and, and thanks also just for being so honest and sharing all of that with us.
Thank you so much.
I believe we are, if, if I can look at my commissioners, yes, we are ready for our second speaker.
My name is Lais. Um, I am, I'm living in Ottawa for now almost five years. And I came from Brazil in two thousand eighteen. Uh, just, and I, I'm working for KAWI, City for All Women Initiative, uh, as a communications coordinator and civic engagements coordinator. But uh, I'm here today to speak as someone had, that have experienced something really close to that in Brazil, that ultimately escalated to uh, result in the extreme right-wing government, federal government that we had from two thousand eighteen to this year. So, um, and, and, and the, the convoy occupation immediately remind me of that. Um, in two thousand fifteen in Brazil, we started to see some protests uh, on the streets with people using the national colors, the national flag and talking about freedom and having their lives back, uh, because their lives were ruined by a leftist government. Um, so these people went to the streets, um, many uh, weekends um, for about a year until the president got uh, suffered an impeachment. So at the time of the protests, um, what I think it really connects to the convoy was first this nationalist uh, character uh, with the symbols and the national anthem and the colors and all that. Uh, second, the complicity of the police that otherwise is really, really violent. Um, I was always uh, present in many protests uh, before this and after this in Brazil. And we were always received with gas, with rubber bullets and all this kind of stuff. And this never happened in the right, at that time were not right-wing protests. But, but after that, we realized that was that. Um, we had police uh, officers taking selfies with the protesters and overtly supporting uh, their claims that we are losing our freedoms due to a leftist government. And the discourse was really diffuse. When we asked these people, what are you protesting against? And they were protesting against the president, against corruption, against uh, children losing their innocence, um, against the family being um, destroyed by the leftist values, uh, the supposed uh, LGBTQ dictatorship and this kind of nonsense that we hear around. So, um, I rapidly um, connected the dots between these two movements. And it got me really scared, especially um, after we start to see uh, the protesters um, really start talking about taking over federal government and impeach the prime, prime minister and all this kind of discourse. And I didn't want to see it happen again in somewhere I lived. Because in Brazil, what happened was uh, from two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen, you had this protests. There were not like any occupation for three, four weeks that it was here. But it was every weekend, uh, all major cities in the country and also smaller cities, people get together with this discourse. And after a year, the president got impeached and we had another president for two years. And at that time, we really moved to the right. So all the social um, net that we had during the previous years, about fifteen years that we had a more social democrat leftist government that was like fight hunger and uh, give more access to poor and black people to university to get uh, the simple fact that people could go and travel abroad. Um, that people could go and study, people get better jobs because of better school that uh, they could buy food and good food, uh, regardless of their uh, social condition. And all that is start to be destroyed from two thousand sixteen on by the government, by the conservative government. And this culminated with the election of Bolsonaro in two thousand eighteen, when things got really, really messy. Um, and we saw even more rights being lost. Uh, legislations uh, being stripped and a really criminalization of any social movement, an actual criminalization that ended with us really having a real fear that we end up in a new dictatorship uh, thirty years after get rid of the last one. So besides uh, the convoy, besides the in, personal impact that I, I didn't live close, but I lived in, I lived in Vannier. And I could listen to all the things. I worked at that time, part-time in Starbucks at Little Italy. And we have these people coming in and complaining to us about the mask policy. And we have these people coming in and complaining to us about the mask policy and all that. Um, for beyond all that, uh, this fear of, uh, have a longstanding effect in the lives of our coun- country and especially the most vulnerable ones, as it happened in Brazil, was frightening, was beyond scare. And I think just after the convoy was when most people could, um, have this idea that the hate speech was coming to life. And it could really do, uh, not just pinpoint harm, but a widespread harm in terms of discourse and actions. So, when I, when Gael talked to me about this, uh, um, session today and how it would be interesting to hear this perspective, um, I feel that I should come, uh, even not being directly affected by the fact, but like thinking about the implications that this come, that is something that we have to keep in mind. So, I think that's, this is my collaboration and thank you for inviting me.
Lais, thank you so much. I am so glad you joined us and shared your experiences uh, and the parallels with Brazil, uh, totally fascinating. I know I have a couple of questions, but I'll, I'll see, um, to my colleagues first. Um, Alex, do you, um, want to ask Lais any questions?
Uh, sure. No, thank you very much for that. It is, um, uh, it is thoughtful and, and chilling. Um, uh, and, and important, I think it's, it's always important to make those wider comparisons and connections globally, because that's the world we live in too. It's not, it's not just random. That, uh, that what happened in Brazil has, has a parallel track to what was happening here. Um, and of course, there's, you know, there's the Gilets Jaunes in, in France and, and, and other contexts where those comparisons are, are very real, um, and they come from somewhere. Um, I'm wondering, um, do you, do you feel that there's sufficient awareness or understanding? Um, and I guess I ask that in a broad sense. I mean, I guess I'm even just kind of asking, you know, the, the people in your own circles, but, uh, but I think more widely uh, in society, do, do you think that people really get the implications of this, that this, that this wasn't just, um, a troublesome nuisance for three and a half weeks? But that we actually do have some deeper learnings that we have to confront here?
I don't think so. In general, no. I think, uh, people who are, um, connected, uh, to these other experiences or this being suffering with, uh, hate speech and violence and physical violence, they can see that. They could look at the situation of the convoy and say, hey, this is an escalation and domination project uh, to spread this ideology. But I think, um, the general public, I don't think so. And me as a journalist, um, also, I'm very worried that our media didn't also connect this, this dots. So, I don't think so. I don't think people are aware that this is not a one-time thing or out of nowhere. Um, it's a really structured, uh, network and that is not uh, exclusive to Canada. And we, I think, most people look at the US and think about the Trump years and all that. But most people are not paying attention beyond, uh, the US. The ones that are paying attention internationally sometimes goes to the West, the United States, but don't go beyond that.
Yeah. And, and it was very notable, the, the comparisons you made with respect to the policing, uh, in, in, in both contexts, um, both, uh, i- i- that that concern about very clear double standards, uh, which, uh, which has certainly been commented on by a number of people. And again, I think, uh, going back to the point you just made, especially by those from the communities who experience that reality of double standard policing. Um, but I, 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 my ears pricked up when you made that specific reference to the police taking selfies, uh, even with, uh, with protesters, which of course was commented on frequently. Uh, including, I think this, that is one of the things that journalists were picking up on. But I wa- I was always a bit struck that it was almost kind of brought up in a lighthearted way, kind of, you know, as if this was a bit humorous or something. Um, I'm assuming you would have something to say about how that's not at all lighthearted and, and humorous, but reflects something deeper and more sinister.
Yeah, not at all, not at all light. Um, we, I think most of us look at the police and are have the experience of being, um, mistreated by police or, uh, count on police to help you with something. I think we are, we have these two sides. Um, and when you see something that caused harm to everyone and the police is just looking at it and kind of celebrating that registering the moment as if they were participants is because they were. Um, in Brazil, we say a lot that, uh, police is not there to protect people. It's there to protect property. And, um, this idea that property is more important than people, especially the undesirable people that became disposable. Um, this is, i- is the very foundation of police force. And since these convoyers were not, um, posing a threat to any important property, they were not, uh, breaking bank, uh, windows, they were not, uh, going to parliament and trying to break stuff, they were not invading city hall, they were not trying to storm the Spotify building. Uh, they were just disturbing people and people that live in Centertown, people that live in Vanier. There are areas that we have this, um, poverty and racialized communities and newcomer communities and lots of homelessness. Um, and these are the undesirable ones. So, they doesn't matter if these are, if, if there's no important property being damaged, not important people being bothered, why police should bother? So, I think if we can take one good thing about this wicked relationship uh, with the police and this, uh, people from the convoy is that, uh, something is really wrong and it brought a conversations about alternatives to policing that was really, i- i- these were the kind of conversations that were really, um, restricted to marginalized communities. And I think we got some kind of glimpse about um, how this is problematic, not big enough, but it opened a conversation, I think. Uh, yeah, so I think this is the sinister thing. I- it, it was in our face that what, uh, the social movements were saying forever, that are some people that are disposable, that don't count, uh, that are just undesirable and no one care, no one in power care about it. And the movements were always, uh, accused of being alarmists or just seeing the negative. Uh, this was right in the faces of everyone. So, this would be, it is sinister, it's sinister, but it's also um, maybe eye-opening for some.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, very, very thoughtful comments. Thank you. I'll pass it on, I guess, to Debbie.
Yes, I was gonna say, Lais, thank you so much for your insights. I, um, couldn't help but think of one particular phrase that I think many black women who engage in this work reference, which is, black women tried to tell you. Um, and I say that as someone who's been involved in, in social movements here in, in Canada on anti-racism feminist movements where we've been trying to ring the alarm of what is happening in Canada. And for many of us who are connected to countries that, um, where we've seen similar patterns, we draw experience to our home countries as well. Um, and oftentimes we find that these warnings that we share are not being heard. And so, the, the example for you to look at your home country, Brazil, and to point to the hypocrisy that we oft, or hypocrisy, or I guess discrepancy, that we like to compare what's happening to the US to be like, oh, yeah, the US. The Brazilian example, I think, could not be the more perfect, uh, and realistic example for us to share. And I think this is, like, the insight you're sharing here is incredible, because I think it connects to some of the other things we've heard from other black people, uh, during this, uh, this process and other racialized people that we all knew what was happening. We, and, and not just the convoy as an, as an individual entity, but the broader, the, the broader implications in terms of what is its impact around. Um, but, and I actually, what, what you wrote here, like what you said, that domination project, the, the backlash that's happening. The, 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 um, response to things that are hard fought on social justice issues and that being a threat to particular people and threats to power. And so, it isn't much as of a, maybe there's a question here. Um, that maybe I'm curious from your perspective. Um, I don't know how long you've lived in Ottawa for, if you're, if you're okay with me asking.
Almost five years.
For five years, okay. And so, I'm, I'm kind of curious, as someone who's been in this, this city for five years and drawing on your experience about you sitting in your home country, wo- and you work at Cowie, or you have worked at Cowie. And so, I think it's also particularly interesting that where you work is adjacent to the municipality. Have you ever brought these conversations up? Because Cowie does very specific work when it comes to women feminist movements here in Ottawa. Have you brought this up to be like, hey, we're seeing these, especially here during the, the height of the pandemic, these weekly protests of people protesting, um, uh, vaccination, et cetera. And, and, and pointed to the fact that this looks similar to something I've seen before. Um, I was curious if you, if you brought that up within your work context and maybe, I don't know if you feel comfortable sharing it, because I do feel like there's something important there, where you work, what you've seen, what was happening. And I'm just curious if anyone was like, yeah, sure, but that, that doesn't really matter. That's not the most important thing. Because this just feels like it was a pressure cooker. Um, and you saw this pressure cooker elsewhere. And I'm just curious if you ever felt comfortable bringing it up in a work context?
Yeah, I brought it up and it was, uh, well-received. But at the same time, uh, this experience was really um, stressful. I don't know if it's the right, uh, word, but, uh, for the organization. Because, uh, as you were saying, um, before, uh, w- w- we don't provide service, but we provide support. And we, we were called out for, uh, not acting fast enough during the convoy for our members. We have a bunch of members who live in Centertown and were feeling helpless. Not just, not because we were not there, because of all the situation and with this layer that we didn't know what to do, how to react, how to start this crisis response as, uh, other organizations, especially the ones that, uh, provide services or have a really, um, direct target, uh, population. Um, we've been talking a lot about it, um, about how to serve better our members, how to support better our members. And also how to, um, make these conversations, uh, more public. So, after that, uh, the convoy, uh, we started a, uh, series, especially our membership. So, to some context, we are mostly older women, uh, part white women, and we have many newcomers too. And me as a newcomer, I can see why many times, uh, newcomers are afraid to be seen as ungrateful or, um, too demanding or to be in a position where they can lose stuff, especially the ones that doesn't have permanent status. Uh, so we had as organization a hard time with, with, uh, the idea of, uh, policing and, uh, talking about the policy budget and all that. Uh, we have many members and, and me, and I put myself in this, when I arrived in Canada, uh, coming from a deeply, um, from a country in a city, I, I come from Rio, that is like full of drug gangs and police and corruption in police and shootings every day and people dying from shootings, just walking on the streets. So, a very violent context. And we arrive in a place like this and you heard people talking about, uh, defund the police. And that police is brutal because they carded you. So, at the, at first I was like, you don't know what you're talking about, so let's forget about it. Um, so I can see why some of our membership had the same reaction. But after the convoy, this open for the organization, a space to talk about all this stuff, to talk about alternatives for police, to listen, uh, more from people impacted for police brutality. And now that, uh, it was a widespread problem. And, yeah, I think I lose, I, I don't know if I missed something else that you said. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's perfect. That's perfect.
Yeah, and also, uh, I talk about it. I, I came to Canada to study at the UAW, at the Feminist and Gender Studies, uh, Department. And I also talked about, uh, it with my colleagues there at the department and they were really open. And because we had, we were a feminist, uh, department, uh, people were really paying attention to the international context. Um, not, um, in the university as a whole. So, even in areas that you would expect, like when we have the international relations or international development, that is a bad name, um, uh, department. And these areas, even in, uh, uh, in the academia, they are not paying attention to that. They have this, a different framework to the other countries that are not the US and Europe. They look at Brazil and at, let's say, Nigeria. And they look at these countries and they think that we as Canadians have to provide things and not learn from them. So, yeah, I think open these conversations too.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I, I could talk to you forever. Um,
Thank you.
Your analysis is so, so. Your analysis is so, so good. I think I finally am I'm starting to have a. A a true understanding of um the structural nature of this. The structural nature of what happened to Ottawa for three weeks and how it's. Where it's rooted and how ongoing it is in a structural way. And and I don't think I could have reached where I got to tonight without your, I I wouldn't have reached this, I don't think, without your testimony. Um, it's huge. I I think it takes someone who comes from a country where there's been a dictatorship. Where there's been this unholy alliance between um police and some segments of the population. Um, to really bring it home to me anyway. I, your analysis, so it 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 finally makes sense to me. Um, and this, the the connection to socioeconomic disadvantage. And the people who suffer socioeconomic disadvantage, racial inequities, et cetera. And the long term implications of this, like the that where that's at the root of this. Um, anyway, I I could go on and and I would love to meet you someday and have this conversation. Thank you so, so very much.
To, I hope I can get more involved uh with the commission because I think it's um. We gotta talk and enact, not just talk, but act too. So. If I can bring some uh contribution out, I I am very, very happy that uh it was. Helpful and thank you for inviting me.
Yeah, just wonderful. Thank you. Um, yeah, so I think we can move to our third speaker. Oh, sorry. Sorry, didn't have my headset on. Hopefully, did you, was I audible? Thanks.
Heard you fine.
All right, there we go.
Hi there.
Hi, everyone. Uh, thanks. Thanks so much for inviting me to speak and and thanks to the previous speakers, Michelle and Lays. My name's Mark. My wife and I live near Lyon and Gloucester, so in the the red zone area. Uh, the uh the so-called Freedom Convoy was definitely one of the worst experiences of our lives. From the first day when one of our neighbors was yelled at to go back to your country, we knew it was gonna be bad. My wife is actually an immigrant from the US and she couldn't get over how prominent the Confederate flags were. Like the protesters probably didn't even realize that they were essentially promoting slavery, ironic for a freedom convoy. Um, and it was offensive to see uh Canadian and American flags desecrated, dragged along the ground, filthy and tattered. In our view, it was really a hate convoy, you know, hate against vaccines, hate against the prime minister, hate against people who wear masks. The freedoms that they seem to care about were the freedom to spread the deadly virus, assault journalists. And compare themselves to Jews in the Holocaust. Shopping for groceries became a dangerous game for us. We were sworn at, stared at, we were mocked for wearing masks. I had to go to medical appointments in the middle of the occupation zone and did all I could to walk near the idling police officers. To avoid being assaulted like others were. We felt really, really bad for the workers in the service sector especially. It was one day in early February, I was getting a coffee on the way back from a physiotherapy appointment. And my barista at the Starbucks at Kent and Albert told me how like he didn't, the staff didn't dare challenge the anti-maskers. Because the staff were all afraid of violence and vandalism. I know that some residents fled the city, including one neighbor in my building who had been, she was surrounded more than once by gangs of angry white men. That intimidated her and spat on her while she was walking her dog. Our building has a Facebook group and it was therapeutic to remind each other that we weren't alone, that we could visit each other without the fear of going outside. Neighbors who did go out, you know, there was reports of having Heil Hitler salutes thrown at them. They saw a lot of racism hurled against people of color. And the the honking was just beyond the pale. Like, my wife has uh severe anxiety. It was pushed into overdrive during that period. We were both working from home, so there was no escape from the honking. It was really painful to see her suffering like that and that they only slowed the honking when forced to by the courts. It's really sad, like an absolute lack of humanity and empathy. We know that many others have even worse anxiety or it's like sensory issues, trying to imagine the situation for small children and for pets. It was borderline torture in our opinion, and with torture with like no legitimate purpose, like what's what is accomplished by endless honking? What is accomplished by setting off fireworks in residential areas at one AM, which we saw it over at Kent and Gloucester there? They gained nothing and we all lost. So February eighth is the day that I will never forget. Um, so it was early afternoon. Um, I was leaving an appointment. Walking westbound on Gladstone. I needed to cross Bronson Avenue. The light for north-south bound traffic on Bronson was red and I had the walk. It had been walked for about fifteen seconds or so as I approached. There was a transport truck heading southbound on Bronson, stopped at the red light. I started crossing and a few steps in, I heard the transport truck fire up its engines. I figured he was turning right, so I continued crossing. When I realized he was barreling at me, I immediately stopped, jumped back to avoid being hit. Again, this guy openly ran the red lights and I still had the walk even after he had passed. It was a transport truck with no trailers on it. It it had massive Canadian flags and some anti-mandate sign plastered to it. Funnily enough, other pedestrians had crossed in front of me a few seconds prior. But the transport truck only decided to run the red light when I entered the intersection. It doesn't take a genius to figure out that I probably became a target because I was wearing a mask. So I like, I was just in shock after. I wish I could say it was an accident, but really, there's no mistaking it. The truck started from a stopped position. The light had already been red for probably twenty seconds. He ran a red light, maiming his truck at me. He was accelerating. It takes time for a big rig to accelerate even with no trailers, but still, had I been hit. By a vehicle that size, I probably would have been killed. When I returned home, I immediately reported this incident to the Ottawa Police. I was too shocked at the time to catch the license plate, though who knows whether it was even visible. But I was hoping that the city would have cameras there. Bronson and Gladstone is certainly a busy intersection. The police said uh that they would investigate. Following six months of silence, I phoned the police to check in and they got back to me saying um. That they were unable to make out the license plate, so would not be taking any further action. That was disappointing, but you know, I'm I'm thankful to be alive. I'm a cis white man. I'm the epitome of privilege. So you know, if I was fearful to go out. I can't imagine the suffering of people from other communities who already face discrimination or indifference from police at the best of times. As we know, it was a miserable few weeks for everyone. My wife talked about going back to the US because even though there's. Constant shootings, extreme inequality, police brutality. At least the police would never have allowed this kind of violent occupation to take hold in a US city. I did convince her to to stay, thankfully. We are grateful to Catherine McCann and Joel Harden for their tireless work on our behalf, but of course, they could only do so much. Our only hope is really that no one ever has to go through what we Centertowners did ever again. And I think that's about it. Thanks for listening. Happy to take any questions.
Oh, dear. Thanks so much, Mark. Um. Thanks so very much. It takes courage to uh to give that kind of testimony and to to remind. Have to go back to that place. Uh, that during that time, it sounds just uh horrible for both you and your wife, so. A a huge thanks for sharing that. Um, I have a few questions, but I will cede, as I do, to my colleagues. Um, Debbie, do you want?
Yeah, absolutely. Mark, thank you so much for sharing your experience, um, including the very like horrific and. Scary experience with that transport truck. Um, I know. Um, Alex might have some more questions about that, so I won't ask about the experience of involving your reporting to the police, but. I'm more curious about your your community. You mentioned your building. And the fact that your building has a Facebook group and that. Many of your neighbors, because you spoke to their experiences, were kind of sharing what they were going through and how folks were supporting each other. Just curious to hear from you if there was any more that you wanted to add on, like. How that Facebook group may have been a a a space for you folks to support each other. Um, just wanted to hear more of that story, if that's okay.
Of course, uh, yeah, my my memory of the transport truck incident is so is still quite accurate because I I wrote. I went, I also wrote the entire thing out, uh, so I would not, it wouldn't slip my mind. The Facebook uh environments, I don't have too many more specifics. I mean, I could go back and check. But uh essentially, uh, it became a a way for people to 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 share their experiences and, you know. Uh, not just to draw sympathy, but to let other people know what what they might be facing if they go out. Uh, people talking about like leaving the city and you know, others like, well, that's, you know, definitely do here. It's great that you're in a position to be able to leave the city. Obviously, not everyone was. Uh, most people were not. Um, but uh just, it it did increase the sense of community in our in our building, which prob- which certainly didn't hurt. So a little silver lining and a very dark cloud. Um, but uh I was able to, for example, being working from home, I said like to the uh. The uh neighbor that uh reported getting uh surrounded and spat on when she was walking her dog, I said, look, I I can. Um, go with you on walks if you want to at least have someone else there. Uh, she actually wound up leaving the city to go be with her parents, I think in London, until the uh the occupation was uh was over, but. Um, yeah, there was just such a a fear of uh of going outside, period. Um, and hearing it it like, there's a certain therapeutic aspect to verbalizing what you're going through. And having people who understand uh empathize with you, but on the other hand, that also probably increases your fear to go out. Because you realize this is what could happen to me and people were getting groceries for each other, like I, like I said, I went out to medical appointments. And I was happy to stop at Shoppers or the Independent and grab things for uh for people who might have uh needed something, but did not want to go out unless they had to.
Excellent, thank you.
To me. Um, uh, what, um, uh, thank you for that. And I'm so sorry for what you went through that. Um, I thi- I think we can all picture that intersection, uh, and that that just must have been terrifying. Um, and I'll come to that in a minute, but um, uh, I I too wanted to ask a little bit about your building. I I I find it really helpful as I'm hearing from people to. You know, to try to get a bit of a sense of of where you lived and um. Uh, and the size of the building. So uh, how how many floors or and maybe how many, how many people are we talking about who would have lived there?
Uh, there's about two hundred and fifty apartments in the building. Um, most most are not very large, so one or two occupants, but. Yeah, so probably a good three or three hundred to four hundred live in the building.
Okay, so quite sizable. And um, uh, is is there any kind of, I don't know. Tenant association or any kind of, I mean, you've got the Facebook group, but is there anything that more uh more formally kind of. Brings residents together in some kind of structure?
Not really, no. Um, the building is a mix of owned and rented units, uh, so there's the the condo board, of course. But uh, the best they could do is give advice, but the the Facebook group had did really uh take off as a as a means to keep people connected.
And uh, one of the things I'm really interested in is, so so we're gonna come to the kind of the police reaction. You got to your report in a minute, but I'm also really interested, and I'm getting a pretty consistent answer. As to as to whether there was anything done proactively by police. Uh, you know, that's a, that's a sizable building. I'm assuming quite a variety of backgrounds and. Um, uh, whatnot amongst the people living there. Um, pretty centrally located uh in the midst of this um, this incident. Any kind of approaches ever made by police to to check in, uh, see how things were in the building? See if anyone was having any issues, any safety concerns?
Not that I'm aware of. Uh, I'd say it was a week into the occupation when we really started having these conversations. And by that time, you know, the reports were widespread that the police were not uh willing or able to do anything to address these uh minor. Uh, situations of of harassment or following or. Uh, you know, the the honking was certainly the number one priority. We we just want it to end, you know. Please, please make it stop. This is not doing anything but hurting people.
Right, yeah. And and so when you reported the the uh the incident that happened on Bronson. Uh, i- did you say that you'd done that by phone?
Yes, I phoned into the Ottawa Police, yeah.
So did they, did you have a a relatively extensive interview with someone? Did they take quite a bit of information from you?
Uh, no, I should clarify, uh, I spoke to someone briefly and they asked me to submit it online. Uh, which is a little easier for me anyway. I'm better at putting my my uh words in in writing. But uh, so I did so, and then perhaps a week later, I got a a response saying that, thank you, we're we're looking, we're looking into this. Um, great, and I waited and waited and six months later, so in August, I phoned in and. What's going on? And then they called me back after about an hour and said, oh, yeah, we closed it because we could not identify the the plates.
So during those six months, there'd been no follow-up, no, no one in touch to try to get, you know. Any further information or details, nothing like that.
No, no, I I had to make the call to them in August to find out what was going on. It's it's strange, they never let me know, but. I told myself, you know, there's people who went through far worse situations than I did. I'm, I'll I'll call when I call and, yeah, after six months, I figured, okay. Time to check in.
Well, went through, uh, people who went through far worse situations only because you were lucky enough to have jumped back. Uh, you know, I mean, there there's a whole, you know, one of the, one of the key reasons we need. Strong justice responses to things like that is to is to deter it from happening uh in the future. Um, uh, were there any, did you have any names of of eyewitnesses or anything of that sort to share with the police?
No, there wasn't, I don't recall any other pedestrians around at the time, that it was the middle of a a weekday. Uh, two PM-ish. Um, I mentioned there were some people who had walked in front of me, uh, through the intersection, but they were. Facing away, like they were walking, uh, going um on uh Gladstone, heading west, so they didn't, wouldn't have seen anything. I was kind of just in shock at the time, just like, did this, did this really just happen? I mean, there was walking down Gladstone and Somerset during the occupation, you know, red lights were routinely ran, so it was no shock. Uh, this was just a bit odd be to me because, you know, he he had stopped at the red light and then started going while it was still red. And I happened to to be there.
Seemed so intentional.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, thank you for sharing that, Mark.
Thank you.
And yes, it it, sorry, just to follow up on that. So the police. Did have cameras there? That's how they got the plate?
I I never got confirmation that they did have cameras there. I I, in my initial submission, I I said, I assume there are cameras at. Bronson and Gladstone. I hope you can uh uh view the license plate. And then when they came back to me in August after I called. They said uh that we could not make out the license plate, so that I didn't press further. That suggests to me they had cameras, but they just could not see the plate.
Which means presumably they had cameras. Showing what had happened to you, anyway, just a, that's just a minor thing that dawns on me. They must have seen what happened to you in any event. Um. Uh, I had one question and again, um, sometimes the questions I ask maybe um. Are a bit sensitive and you you might not want to answer, but I just was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about your wife's experience. You said she already suffered severe anxiety. Um, is there anything more you could say about the impact of this on her? You know, pre-existing condition, you might say. I, as an anxiety sufferer, I have a lot of sympathy. Um, and for the triggering of anxiety, um, through, um, especially unexpected events can be worse in a way. Um, I'm just wondering if you have any any further comments on that. And again, please don't feel that you need to answer it if you feel that it's um. Divulging personal information.
No, I'm happy to answer. I I just, I've been very fortunate to, I'm not someone who suffers from anxiety, like the situation irritated me certainly. But the honking, but you know, it's it's, I can't, it's tough for me to get into the mindset of of an anxiety sufferer. I. Just, uh, no, it made her extremely anxious. She had to work, of course. She was working from home and. Uh, just making her very much on edge and uh, you know, unable to focus. Uh, she also has ADHD and it uh did not, did not help the situation. It's like. Routinely, I I can't, I can't do my work. I I can't function with this this noise, you know. And we talked several times about, you know, leaving the city again. We were. And we talked several times about, you know, leaving the city again. We were fortunate to be um in a situation where we we could leave potentially and because we were working remotely, we could work elsewhere, but it was always like, well, you know, they're about to leave her. The the police are about to make a move. We were constantly on the brink of hope that the occupation would be cleared out by various politicians and that, and it just repeatedly did not happen, so we stayed, but it was just uh, you know, she would, the tears, you know, it was just very hard as as her spouse to see this happening and be completely helpless to to do something about it.
Absolutely. And I just have one final question. Um, just to go back to uh something Alex was asking you about. Um, with respect to, you know, um, did the police or any other public official um come to your building and, you know, provide any um services or concern, et cetera? I was also wondering, you know, my mom lives in a condo, not in the red zone. Um, she near, she lives in a condo near um where the truckers were um mobilizing um in the East End, sort of near Van Vanier. And um normally, when anything impacts the building, she get, I don't know if your condos like this, but the condo corp issues some kind of flyer and shoves it under her door. And I'm just wondering, did the condo corp? I don't know if your condo corp does that, first of all, um and whether your condo corp issued any like sometimes in her building, there's a notice in the elevator, there's going to be a disruption today, you know, et cetera. So for example, during the convoy, there was a notice in her elevator saying that that um, when they were trying to clear the convoy, that that strip of Riverside Drive was gonna be closed, et cetera. Was there any communication with the condo corp like that? Um, I'm just trying to figure out if maybe the condo corp had heard from any public official.
I do not remember any communication from the condo corp uh about the convoy at all. Um, I I'm not faulting them, but I uh no, I don't. I mean, our our building is a lot of like young professionals and that. There's there's not many families. It could have been different. Uh, that said, we are very close to Centennial Public School where there were reports of children being shouted at who were wearing masks. But uh, no, to answer your question.
That's helpful. And I, I'm I'm not also casting aspersions on any condo corp. This is a, uh, in my opinion, public officials should have been engaged, but you you know, they could have, for example, contacted all the condo corps in the red zone to say your buildings are going to be impacted. Uh, you know, something. Anyway, so that's, I'm just um casting about um in that regard.
They they may have issued a notice when the parking or sorry, when the um the checkpoints came in. I'm just, I'm trying to, I could check my emails, but uh that just being aware that we would need to know that, but nothing more.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, really appreciate you sharing your story. And again, um you know, just again, sorry that you went through what you did and your wife as well.
Thank you for what you're doing and thanks for giving me the time.
Thanks, Mark. Um, so Commissioners, our fourth speaker um is unavailable this evening and so um that includes the session. Debbie, do you wanna close us on out?
Yeah, yes, I can. Um, so I wanna thank uh the three speakers that we heard from tonight uh for coming forward and sharing their stories. They were really, really super, super insightful. Um, and I think even opened our eyes to um looking at uh the impact that community had from a different perspective. So thank you so much. Um, we have future opportunities for public hearings, but not a lot as we are nearing the end. Um, our last public hearing is happening this Saturday, December tenth in person. Uh, there will be one tomorrow and I'm sure there's another, there's a maybe another one, but you can check out um the listings of the next couple of hearings we're having on our website, OPC dash CPO dot C A. Um, if you are interested in speaking publicly, please take a look at some of the last remaining public hearings we have and register. Um, or you're encouraged to send your comments to us in writing. Um, while we're here, we also wanna just thank the interpreters behind the scenes for their assistance and the staff and volunteers who helped us organize this event. Again, please check our website to see the last few public hearings that we're gonna be having for the remainder of the month of December. Um, and to stay in to, uh stay in touch for the next phase of the project, uh including the the report that we will be releasing in the new year. So thank you. Good night and be safe.